We usually start our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you could all rise, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one inch apart, without borders, without fear, and justice for all.
Officer Casey, yeah. Usually start our meetings with public safety. We have Chief Lute, Officer Casey from Suffolk County. It's good to see you again. And we take your comments for public safety. Chief, you want to give a brief report? Introduce everybody?
Sure. You see a lot of my guys in the back. They're here for an award ceremony that will take place immediately after, as soon as questions are done. I have almost no report tonight, except that it was very cold, and now it's getting warmer again. So, we were just talking about that in the hallway. We don't know what to bring with us to go to work. You'll see in the back, I have guys in long sleeves, short sleeves, sweatshirts, jackets. Nobody knows what to wear. We're working on quite a few things, as far as traffic safety, and I'll be meeting with the mayor and the deputy mayor tomorrow about certain things. As far as my report, I don't have much, again, for this month, and I'm anticipating, you know, honoring these gentlemen in the back. Casey?
Hi, everybody. My name is Officer Casey Barry. I work in the 6th Precinct Culp Unit. It's nice to be here. I was a Culp officer about a year and a half ago, and I just kind of split off and did a little work in something called our Behavioral Health Unit. So, I'm not going to, I just want to tell you actually something that the police department's doing, which is, we created a unit that really identifies and works with those individuals in Suffolk County, who are high utilizers of police services because they have psychiatric issues and/or substance abuse issues. So, because they have such frequent contact with us that might not necessarily require police services, we've linked with Family Service League, and what we do is try to get those individuals the help that they need through having Family Service League do outreach with them. So, it's a great, great unit. I'm an LCSW in my past life, so it was a really round peg, round hole for me to get the unit going, but I really miss being with the community. So, after being there for the past eighteen months, I'm back home in the 6th Precinct, and I'm happy to be here. So, what we usually do every month, if everybody's familiar with this, is we kind of go through our statistics of what Port Jeff Village has experienced this past month as compared to last year. So, we report, we tell you how many calls for services that you, service that you had. So, the timeframe was from January 2nd to February 6th, so I'm comparing 22 to 23. Last year, it was 367 calls compared to 303 calls. And of those calls, the crimes that were reported, we kind of break down a couple of those specifically, like aggravated harassment. There were zero last year, zero this year, assault, one last year, zero this year. Burglary, there were zero last year and two this year. One was somebody, broke into somebody's home while the house was occupied. It was likely a known party, and drugs were likely involved. And the other one was at Port Bistro, an individual broke in, they pried the door open, and took some alcohol and an iPad, and that's still an active investigation. Criminal mischief, there was one last year and five this year. The five are mostly domestic incidents. Three of them are from the same individual, likely an ex-boyfriend, slashing her tires twice, two separate occurrences, and then spray painting her house. Another one was assumed to be another ex-boyfriend in a different, different party. Somebody keyed her car. She thinks it was, she's having conflict with him there. And then at Pax Christi, an individual was angry and ended up kicking a door, breaking the door. Criminal mischief is basically the charge of somebody damaging somebody's property. What else? We have brand larceny, that's zero last year, zero this year. Harassment, nine last year, only one this year. Larcenies, you had four last year and three this year. These larcenies were mostly related to people leaving items in their vehicle. So, we want to remind you, they were all actually that, an iPad in the vehicle, somebody's headrest was taken from their vehicle. I find that really interesting. Like, their door was, their car was unlocked in the street in Port Jeff Village, their headrest was gone when they came back. But, just a reminder, though, not only are people checking doors and trying to see if they can get something valuable from your vehicle, but also taking cars. That's, that's been an increase in occurrences in the county, as well as the precinct. So, often, more often than not, it's people who are leaving their cars running, and the key fob in the vehicle, in front of 7-Eleven, or Starbucks getting their coffee, and their car is gone. So, just a reminder to just take that extra step to lock your vehicle. And robberies, none last year and none this year. So, that's really great with a total of fourteen crimes that were reported this past month. And for terms of non-criminal incidents, 338 last year, 277 this year. Your traffic summonses, there were eleven written last year and eleven this year. So, that's what I have in terms of our stats. We are aware of a couple of party houses that had some noise disturbances recently, just so you guys know, on Park in Harborview. We are aware of that, and we have entered them into our patrol check system, which means we're advising our local sector car operators to make regular drive-bys around typical times of the parties. They are houses that have been identified by Stony Brook Campus as frat houses. So, we're working with Stony Brook Campus, as well as trying to discuss with the property owner how we can work to regulate the noise disturbances in your community. So, we wanted to let you know that we are aware of that. And I think that's all I have to report to you offhand, and I wanted to open it up for questions before we get to congratulate everybody in the back of the room here for their bravery and their work that they do here for the village.
And you should know we're happy to have you back.
Yes.
Thank you. So happy. Can you tell them happy to be here? I'm really happy to be here. I love this community. I used to live here. I just moved over to Miller Place recently, but I think this is a great village.
Thank you.
It really is. Great people in it, and it's, it's a great community to serve. So, I appreciate being here.
Art?
Mayor, I'm agree.
Thank you.
Everybody's just great.
Yes, and because we're live streaming, we have to come up to the mic, so
Oh, gosh, I was on camera.
Our participants can make sure they hear. We've missed you, Officer Casey.
Good evening, Officer Casey and Chief Lute, RDEP 206 East Main Street. I recently had a conversation with a friend of mine that enlightened me as to how important dash cams can be. I'd like to share a couple of the details, then ask you each a question. What happened was, my friend Julie's husband in Virginia was involved in a very serious automobile accident. It happened at an intersection for which there was no video surveillance. And because of the physical trauma of the accident, her husband had no recall as to the moments leading up to it, or what actually happened. And he was charged with running a red light. And that probably has insurance ramifications and could open Pandora's Box to a host of, bunch of other issues. So, when he got out of the hospital, he examined his dash cam, looked at the video footage, then called the local police who came to his house, watched the footage, then dropped all charges. And interestingly, they also have a son who at one point was a major in the United States Air Force, and he had a dash cam to the rear that actually provided evidence to sort of resolve another issue, totally distinct. So, my question to you, Officer Casey, is, does the Suffolk County Police have any initiative or program in place to promote private citizens to get dash cams? Because, obviously, they have evidentiary value. And my question to Chief Lute is, are all of our constable vehicles equipped front and rear with dash cams to protect our good constables?
So, as far as I know, the county is not promoting any initiative to have individuals, you know, get a dash cam for themselves. But, I think it's a great idea for you to always be personally, if you have the availability, the finances, to have a dash cam personally, or like ring on your homes. It's always helpful to have something on camera. It helps us definitely find the individual who's committing crimes, or in that kind of situation, seeing another side to the story, which is obviously on camera. But, I'm not familiar with initiative that's promoted, being promoted within the community.
We, we have several. They're inexpensive. On certain times, we deploy them to our unmarked cars, Thanksgiving Eve, where we have the expectation there'll be a large crowd of people. So, we do use them intermittently. We don't use them all the time.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Any other comments for public safety? For Officer Casey or Chief Lute? No, thank you. And despite the content of your report, you're magnificent. We love you, and we're happy you're back. We're going to go to recognition of the three code officers that, on December 28th, while I just sat down for Theater 3's production of A Christmas Carol, my phone went into alert mode. And can we three, have the three code officers, Sergeant Scott Barrero? Kathy Anne, you're going to have to help me with the Emmanuel?
Khorapakis.
Khorapakis, one Greek to another. Scotty. And Officer Kevin Tonner, please come forward. Kathy Anne, you want to talk about the Good Samaritan first?
I can do that.
Yeah. We also had a Good Samaritan who's apparently assisted, and we obviously want to acknowledge anybody else who was on-site, in addition to our code enforcement officers. I'll give a little description. On the night of December 28th, it was an active shooter incident in Uptown Port Jeff. We want to thank you and your team efforts in closing off the scene to both vehicular and pedestrian traffic, rendering life-saving first aid to the victim, and keeping all safe until Suffolk County Police arrive. You know, code is the first on the scene, securing the scene, and making sure that no one else gets in harm's way prior to Suffolk arriving. I think on that same day, there was another incident with the shooting of two Suffolk County Yep. So, unfortunately, the Suffolk was about 12 minutes to respond to our particular incident, so it was very concerning, but I was assured that the premises were held secure. Kathy Anne, you want to talk a little bit about the?
That's the other incident.
Oh, okay. I apologize. So, we have three proclamations, and basically, I just want to recognize you today on the 6th of February for your act of bravery and heroism and many years of public service. You all, all the gentlemen in the back of the room, and the ones here being recognized this evening, you're valuable assets to our community, and we appreciate and applaud you as positive role models, and always, you know, doing the usual tasks, but also doing the extraordinary when, when called upon. So, I just want to congratulate you, and thank you for your service. You'll get a picture with Kathy Anne, and then Fred, you want to join them in the photo, and then we'll get the team up here again. You guys are making, I don't like to make this a monthly occurrence, because that means that something really, really out of the ordinary is going on in the village of Port Jefferson, but I just want to applaud you gentlemen, and give you thanks.
Tell something there, Mayor. It deserves it.
Let's let them do it. No, 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 go. You guys go.
All right. There you go. Three, two, one.
Can we get the whole bureau up here again, please? One more family.
All right, everyone, one up.
Get the whole bureau on the board. Lauren, you want to? Rebecca, you want to come up?
All right, Rebecca, I'm not seeing you. There we go. Stan, I got you. Margo, Lauren, Kathy Anne, and all the gentlemen, I see you all. Thank you. All right. Smiles, maybe? Thank you, guys.
Kathy Anne, you just want to speak about the Good Samaritan who was at the other event, because we all, we, we don't ever mean to overlook any other Good Samaritan who's on-site helping with a situation, but we never mean to slight anybody.
No, never. It was after our last proclamation ceremony that I was contacted by a village resident whose brother was actually the Good Samaritan who was first to jump into the water after the incident where the car drove into the harbor.
Johnny. Johnny B. Take it outside.
All right, I'll, I'll start over. So, I was, after the last commendation ceremony, where, where we offered proclamations to our code officers for jumping in the water to help save the gentleman who drove into the harbor, I was contacted by a village resident who informed me that it was actually her brother who was first in the water. He happened to be driving by, and he saw the car in the water. He stopped, turned around, stopped, and jumped in the water. He had conversations with the man in the car, and tried to do his best to help him, was in the water for several minutes, was taken to the hospital, put his own life in danger. So, I want to thank him for his bravery, and for his selflessness, and for doing what he could to help another person who was in need. He did not want to be named, but I wanted to make sure that we made a mention of what he did for us. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a very special guest with us tonight, Mr. Steve Engelbreit, our Assemblyman. Steve, you want to just get him up here? I'm going to embarrass you for a few minutes. Steve served in the legislature from 1983 till 1992, when you were elected Assemblyman of our fifth?
Fourth.
Fourth district. For almost, it was a thirty years, Steve, from 92 to 22. And we lost a very close landslide election, but I think the biggest loss is you, having you as our chairman of environmental, everything environmental in New York State, and preserver of our history. You know, I don't know if everybody knows some of the just highlights of your career, Steve. You know, the environmental rights amendment to the state constitution, guaranteeing New York residents a right to clean air, water, and a healthy environment, is a landmark amendment that, you know, a yeoman's lift, as you have said to me, in many of the projects we've worked on together. And most recently, you sponsored the state's landmark climate leadership and community protection act, which set ambitious goals for emissions and reductions, pushing an environmental bond that we just passed recently, to help sponsor $4.2 million in bonds for climate change and climate resilience initiatives. So, bringing it more to a, close to home. I've worked with you on the LIPA initiative. We had many, many conversations about global warming, the future of our plants, clean energy, wind power is coming. Here we have Orsted windmills off our south shore. And then also, of course, with the historic preservation. You helped us move a little gray house down the street to park on the corner here, which is now an instrumental spy ring cornerstone to the history of the Civil War, and the role of the Spy Brothers, Nathaniel and Phillips Row, and with George Washington's, you know, spy ring, and initiators of the CIA as we know it today. And now, also, the Tooker House up on Upper Sheep, still partnering with you, and we're not letting you go. In securing the funding that we need to close on that property and restore it to its historic integrity. So, you, you know, it's emotional for me, because it's you. So, but, it gets funny. It gets funny. So, yeah. We, we had a pla, we have, we have a plaque for you, but my Parks Department is so efficient, they already, they already secured it on the building. The plaque is on the Drow Meadow Cottage, and it says, "With gratitude to Assemblyman Steve Engelbreit, the Preserver of our History." So, we're going to have to take a field trip and go get a picture there, but I have to tell you, I was in the bathroom before. I said, "I can't give him, I just can't not give him anything," so I stole a picture off the wall.
Wait, wait. Can you get a pic? Can I get a picture?
Oh, sure.
And you've stolen a picture?
You pay extra for this stolen picture.
He's going to take it, you know.
I know. That's okay. It's his. I'll sign it, too.
While they're doing that, the plaque reads, "With gratitude to Assemblyman Steve Engelbreit, the Preserver of our History."
At 7:30, I was like, "Can you take the plaque off the building, please?" No.
Thank you, Margo. And thank you, Catherine, all of you. Thank you so very much, and for this warm greeting from my friends and neighbors. I just want to say that it's been a great honor to work with this board, this administration. You've touched on many of the things that have helped guide the destiny of our community. It was sort of navigating through mine-filled waters, but the ship has arrived, and it's in pretty good shape. And as we look forward, we also look backward. The Tooker House was a discovery that was made by the Historical Society here in Port Jefferson. That house was in such decrepit condition that the order had gone out to knock it down. I just want to say thank you, Madam Mayor. I appeal to you. Once I heard from the Historical Society that, that they thought that this had really great antiquity and value, I called you, and you immediately put the men who just left the room here around the house and protected it. That gave me time to gather some money together, a little more than $800,000, which I think is, is a reflection of the fact that when we appealed together to the Commissioner of Parks, the state historic preservation officer is Eric Kulase, the State Commissioner of Parks, and revealed to him that the Tooker House had great antiquity and great value historically. It was the first house in Port Jefferson that was built. That, he acted to make it eligible for the National Register of Historic Sites. That made raising the money easier, and it was also a cameo of the kind of cooperation that you referred to before. And it's really an extraordinary property. It, by the way, your counsel has worked so hard on this, I wanted to
Brian.
I had, thank you so much.
Brian!
You've, you've been amazing.
Yeah.
Thank you so very much. You've preserved an important part of our history. Who would have thought that the oldest house would be so far away from the water? You would always think, eh, the old house would be next to the water. But, in fact, the Tooker House was built after the first road was built, and it was to service the people who were going on the first road, which is North Country Road, probably authorized by King Charles II. It cut the first road in the wilderness between Southhold and Sutaket. And this entrepreneur named Tooker located his home to service the road. And that's why it's the oldest house, and it's, it gives us a sense of the age of the road. Before that road was built, the only way to get back and forth between the Southholding of New Haven, Southhold, and the Sutaket Colony was by water. And they came into this great harbor, and we've worked together to preserve the harbor, and we have a chance to preserve the legacy that our forebears have brought to us. I'm so very grateful. That adventure is just beginning. That house has many more insights to give us as we restore it and place it into useful service. I, again, say thank you so very, very much to the board. You're all my heroes, and it's a great honor to receive the picture off the wall.
Sorry, I got.
What about a picture?
Sure.
Do a picture.
Let's join them in the front for a picture, guys. Please.
That's good.
Wait, we need the stolen picture. Yeah. Everybody in the middle of this, come on. With the picture, so that we know who took it.
Squeeze it in. Yeah. Go right here. Everyone look right here.
Oh, I got a microphone. Oh, it's fixed. Sorry. Thanks.
Got him. And now me. Hold on. Now me. My turn. My turn. Thank you. Perfect, 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 perfect. One more.
Thank you.
You can always ask if he wants one of the better ones on the wall.
You can trade this in for anything you want. Just take any of ours. Any bathroom. 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 There's photo shops. And other things.
Yep. So, we also have a public hearing tonight. Whoo! We want to have something of everything. This is for Section 117-8 of the Village Code regarding, regarding dogs on certain village properties during village-sponsored public events. I hand it over to Brian.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very good worker. I'm a very good public. I want to join, thank you to Steve Engelbreit, for his leadership on the United States of America. To someone who's been admired for a long time in Albany, and all of us who have ever been in public service, and certainly members of the petition. Thank you for all of your dedication up there in Albany, fighting for all of us. Thank you very much. Following all of that, including rescues in the harbor, although this feels very mundane, but this is the business of the city government. There is a prohibition that everyone must keep their dog under restraint at all times, and there are portions of our park, including our beaches, there are portions of our parkland where dogs are prohibited, that including the fence, children's playground at Clifton Lee Park, the children's playground at Harborfront, or in Caroline Field. The goal, the proposed amendment tonight is based on some of our successful events, which is Port Pauls, that we've had in the parks, to allow an exception during specified timeframes during a village-sponsored public event. It just clarifies that the prohibition, the absolute prohibition of dogs in those three specific areas are allowed during village-sponsored public events. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board members regarding this proposed change?
I just had a question from a resident to absolutely clarify that it does not further or change the prohibitions or allowances on the, any of our beaches.
Correct.
Thank you.
I have a letter to read. Are you going to read it, Barb?
Well, I'm just going to accept, except for the record.
Oh, okay. Right. Okay, great. In general, he's in favor. He just wants to make sure the proper signage is up, and just so everybody understands his comment for the evening.
Lauren? Just a quick question about the, the law, the new ordinance. How do, how does the general public understand when and where the law will be in hiatus or not in, not enforced?
Yeah, it's really an important question for the, for the village constables and public agencies, but it would only be during the organ
Yep, so we also have a public hearing tonight. Whew. We want to have something of everything. This is for Section 117-8 of the Village Code regarding dogs on certain village properties during village-sponsored public events. I hand it over to Brian. Are there any questions from the board members regarding this proposed change?
I just had a question from a resident to absolutely clarify that it does not further or change the prohibitions or allowances on any of our beaches.
Correct.
Thank you.
I have a letter to read. Are you gonna read it, Barb? Oh, okay. Okay, great. In general, he's in favor. He just wants to make sure the proper signage is up and just so everybody understands his comment for the evening.
Lauren, just a quick question about the new ordinance. How does the general public understand when and where the law will be on hiatus or not enforced?
And we have-- And we have a-- I'm sorry, were you gonna make a-- Yeah, please.
Mayor Grant and members of the board, thank you. My name's Alan Kirsch. I'm at 111 Beltair Road, Port Jeff Village. The reason I'm here, I guess, is because I'm responsible partially for this amendment to the code. I'm gonna be looking to run the group dog training class at Caroline Field, and for that reason, we need to make a change to the code. I just want to explain why I'm uniquely qualified to run the program and why, or I should say, I want to address everyone's concerns with the number one issue, and that's picking up number two. So, with dogs running around in the park, there's absolute possibility that there's gonna be some remnants left behind. The reason why I say that I'm qualified is because, first of all, I'm a lifetime dog owner. I've had dogs since I was an infant. I've had them my entire life. When I joined the MTA Police Department back in 1997, I got into the canine unit. I was a canine officer for 15 years and a canine trainer for eight of those years. Working in places like Grand Central and Penn Station, picking up after our dogs was priority number one. It's always on my mind. It's constantly been bombarded. We cannot leave waste behind, so that's always been on my mind. When I retired back in 2019, I got involved with training dogs privately. We used a small church field in Wantaw and a small fenced-in area that, again, 20, 30 dogs were running around in this field. Cleaning up after those dogs, again, was priority number one, because we didn't want to leave any complaints to the church. So, for that reason, again, I want to tell you that this is going to be number one priority of mine, is to have any participants in the class clean up after themselves. And I would like to address one question that I don't know if it exists or not. Are there trash cans in that area and/or waste baskets or waste bags for the dogs? I will always have them with me in event that there isn't, but I will always have that with me.
Yeah, I actually just had a conversation with the head of our Parks Department, and we'll have the bags with a garbage receptacle there, as well as, it's actually part of my report, one of the things that we earn some money for in the Port Paws event through the conservancy is to have a dog water fountain there as well.
Oh, wow.
So, we're hoping to, I don't know the timeline on that, I'm looking at Kevin, but we're working on that, and so we'll have the bags, we'll have the trash receptacle, and then hopefully the water station.
Okay, great. Any questions for me from anybody?
No, really. I think what happened for us is when we saw the popularity of the event, and we're huge pet lovers, I think all of us, I think most of us have a dog. It's not one or two. So, I mean, you know, and to make an event family-friendly and also pet-friendly, and just the huge response, and then expanding it to having programs where we can bring families down with their pets for training and using the field for, you know, a wider expansion of use, we saw immediately that we had to amend the code, and we can't wait to see what you're doing with the puppies in the field. It's gonna be great.
Me too.
I also feel that having a training program is going to help create more responsible dog owners within, right in our community. And I would ask that you, if you haven't already, have a portion of your training being about just being responsible. Dogs on the leash are in control at all times and where they go and can't go, which is great. So, I think that's a great addition. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the general public with respect to the proposed code change? Comments, questions, concerns?
Can I just add one more comment?
Sure.
I just feel like looking forward to these events or non-village, non-sponsored village events in which dog owners bring their dogs and say, "Well, I'm bringing my dog to Clifton Lee Park because I think this is..." How do they know when it's not a sponsored event and when it is? And I'm just thinking, going forward, can we create signage that is part of this to place the signage outside of the event, so it's clearly defined that this is a village-sponsored event that dogs are allowed to be in this park? Something like that, yeah.
Okay, so a motion to close the public hearing? Trustee Cassay made the motion, trustee Lauks seconded. All in favor of closing the public hearing? And somebody want to make a motion to adopt? Motion to adopt by trustee Snaden, seconded by trustee Shepro. Sorry, I'm fading out over here. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Barbara. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Kathy Anne. Thank you to our neighboring friendly dog trainers in the village of Port Jefferson. All right, we're gonna go to reports, gonna ask everybody to see if they could keep it a little short. Rebecca, we're gonna start with you.
Thank you.
Just back from Africa, let's see.
Yes, which is full of inspiration and looking forward to tackling these climate issues here in our own village. So, very excited for a conversation to be held between the village and USGS. They're currently doing a compound flood risk model, and they're looking for communities to focus on. So, they're selecting one or two communities in the Long Island Sound area to look, to bring their resources, bring their latest technology and understanding of flood modeling and also climate resilience. And so, I've been whispering in the ear of Elizabeth Hornstein, who's from the Sea Grant and a great resource for our village and nonprofits and other municipalities regarding climate resilience. And so, I've been sending her every little thing that's come by my desk as far as why Port Jefferson would be a great candidate for this study. And so, we do have a meeting coming up with USGS that I'm very excited about. The mayor and I will display clearly how interested we are in climate resilience and in tackling, being proactive about these issues. To that point, we have about $80,000 grant that I'm currently chairing a committee on and working with CASA Architects to look at a climate resilience plan. The community can look for a date to be announced for a late March or early April presentation that will either be held virtually or hybrid and recorded, so that we can maximize the number of people who will see the data. We're gonna try to make it, you know, both for the science geeks like me, but also, you know, the general public to see all of the data that's been collected, all of the statistics, the charts, looking at what do we know about flooding in Port Jefferson? What do we know about climate change coming up? And then how do we make a roadmap? So, that's the goal of this study, which is gonna go on over the course of a couple of years, is creating a roadmap of actions for the village to build on what they've already done and pave the way forward to have a climate resilient community to mitigate flooding. You know, we used to be called Drown Meadows, so I make no promises, and in fact, you can almost promise that we're never going to eliminate flooding in our village, but we can take really important actions to mitigate that and preserve both the history, the environment here, our commercial districts, and most importantly, residents' homes and the place that they love. So, please keep an eye out for that date announcement, and please do tune in, whether it be at the event itself or while you're doing your dishes on a Tuesday evening. You know, it's just a very important bit of information there, and I'll keep my report to that.
Thank you, Rebecca. Welcome back. Trustee Lauks.
It's not gonna be short. News from the Parks-- we'll start with the Parks Department. With regards to the kayak racks this year, we have 234 racks that will be available for all kayaks, canoes, and vessels. We have 54 at East Beach, 36 at Centennial, and 144 down at the Crystal Brook location. Applications can be picked up at Village Hall starting on March 1st. We plan on holding a lottery on April 3rd, which is a Monday. You may place two vessels on a rack if you're fortunate enough to get a rack. However, those vessels must be of similar size, and you must have a permit on each one of those vessels. Some more news, Parks Department has replaced all the railings up at the Country Club, and they put car stops in there to keep people from going through the railings, which has been a problem in the past. They've all been repaired. As the liaison to the Parks Department, I've been meeting with trustee Shepro and the Recreation Committee to discuss and identify recreational park facilities that need renovation and repair. I believe the committee is in consensus that we've created a list of priorities, and the first one will be the bathrooms over at the East Beach. We talked a little bit about that downstairs, and we'll be moving forward with that as soon as possible. News from the Country Club. We have plans, engineering plans, in place to replace the racket facilities up at the Country Club. These plans call for the building of six pickleball courts and two tennis courts, I'm sorry, three tennis courts. This new facility is going to be constructed with a hard surface to allow play for a much longer season. Also, there is absolutely no or very little maintenance involved in these kind of courts. The facility is going to be available to all village residents as well as some sort of membership. The timetable for construction is totally dependent upon the present construction that's going on up there right now with the lower wall construction. As I mentioned at the last meeting, the membership office has been moved across the street. It's over now in the pro shop. Membership signup is taking place at this time. We are running as well or better than last year in terms of numbers of members that are signing up. I want to remind anyone who has not signed up yet that on the 1st of March, the dues will increase a little bit. Some late fall and winter projects at the club have included a complete aeration, reseating, and renovation of all of those fairways that we lost due to the drought that we had this summer. I think the members are gonna be quite surprised when they come back. We are installing GPS systems on all of our cart fleet, which is going to really assist us in controlling where people drive. It's pretty much a safety issue. We have some pretty hilly areas up there, and these GPSs will be programmed so that if you approach any of these areas, the cart will stop. You'll have to put it in reverse and back your way out and get back where you belong. No more driving into the sand traps or the pond, I hope. We've also installed a nice patio surrounding a new fire pit that was put in over next to the new barbecue grill that we built last summer. And with the addition of these summers, these two stations, we're planning many new social activities. These activities will involve some sort of golf and some other activities using these facilities, the barbecue pit and the fire pit. All members will shortly have the ability to view a short video that we're putting together. This video is going to introduce our staff up at the Country Club and review the club policies that a lot of our members have seemed to have forgotten. It's going to be required of all members, and Kevin Wood is here in charge of trying to figure out how to make that work. Once again, I want to announce that we have hired a new general manager. Tom Natola comes to us with an extensive background in high-end country clubs. Tom, at once time, managed all of the Arnold Palmer Clubs, and Tom has hit the ground running, and things are moving along quite rapidly up at the club. The final thing I want to say is, I know many of you have never seen our Country Club from the inside, and I'm offering the opportunity to anyone here, if you want to contact me once the weather clears, I'd be glad to put you in a golf cart and take you a ride through our golf course, show you our facilities, our new maintenance facility, and the entire complex. The only condition attached is you've gotta wait till the weather's warmer, because I'm not gonna go out there in the cold weather. Thank you.
Seven minutes, 20 seconds, Stan.
I said it wouldn't be short.
Wasn't counting, though. Trustee Shepro.
Thank you. Just a couple of updates. Our Parks and Recreation Advisory Council, as trustee Lauks alluded to, it actually met last month on January 26th, and we had a very robust discussion. And as he mentioned, one of the priorities that came out of that meeting that they identified was to update the East Beach and West Beach facilities, so we will start looking into that. A couple of other recommendations from this council was to agree to an increase in the fees to the softball program, men's and women's. And that's basically because we're sort of running in the deficit column for softball. So, in addition to increasing the fees from $1,500 to $1,850 per team for the men, and from $700 to $950 per team for the women, we are also, they are also recommending that we allow the entire team to consist of members from any community as long as two of the members of the team are affiliated with the village, either as a Port Jefferson Fire Department volunteer or employee, Port Jeff School District volunteer or employee, Port Jeff School District employee, who those individuals are currently allowed to play in the league as it is, a resident, and an employee of the village. So, as long as there are two of those people that fit within those categories, the team can then grow from there. So, those are recommendations that were made and looking to institute that starting in April when the league begins. One other aspect that I'd like to report on involves the Country Club Social and Hospitality Task Force Initiative. Coming out of that initiative, we've been working closely with the food and beverage vendor to create a survey. I mentioned it last month, and the survey has been created, and the Country Club services sort of tacked on to the food and beverage service aspect of that. So, there are nine questions on that survey. It went out on Thursday to all current members and last year's members as well, and each member is allowed to respond once. So far, out of about 675 recipients, we've gotten nearly 130 responses, and we've got a lot of really robust feedback from our members on open-ended questions and recommendations and suggestions. So, I think within the next month or so, we'll see.
There's seven minutes and 21 seconds. Beep.
All right, okay, I guess that's the end of my report. It pretty much was. You know, we're looking forward to reporting on the findings of the survey, and I think that we'll get some really good results from our vendor partner and also from the Country Club management. So, excited about that. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Deputy Mayor Snaden, I apologize.
Thank you, Mayor. I will keep mine brief. Some upcoming events, we mentioned the Port Paws event will be coming up on July 15th and 16th. The 14th, they'll be setting up the pool, so we hope to see everybody there, and hopefully it's not as hot as last year. I remember Al was there as a vendor, it was brutally hot, but good for the dogs. Port Palooza is our music festival, will be coming up on July 29th. And an event that just happened was the Ice Festival. I'm sure everybody was out and about enjoying that. It was toasty warm that day, but it was a fun event, very well attended. The ice sculptures were, you know, beautiful as always, and it was fun had by all. Our parking, I had mentioned at our last meeting, resident stickers are no longer a thing. We're using license plate readers now, and you can very, very easily get your-- license plate registered as a resident to park in all of our resident lots and all of our regular lots for free by going to the website, to the parking tab there. And you just need a photograph of your driver's license and your registration. You upload those. It goes through a quick processing through our parking department and you will be registered. To date, we have 917 residents processed so far. And the other thing to note is with this new technology, the handheld license plate readers that the, I'm sorry, not license plate readers, the handhelds that the code officers have, it uploads to those handhelds real time. So they're immediately in the system out on the street as well. And that's been working great. I'm getting great feedback on that. The Dog Fountain I mentioned earlier will be going into Caroline Field, hopefully in time for the next Port Paws event. Working with the ARC, the Architectural Review Committee, very good news that most of you residents know about rustic bread. We follow them on Facebook. We buy their products at the farmer's market. We are working with that application to get that bakery up and running in Baker's Alley. So we're happy to see that.
I was gonna say, brings new definition to rustic bread.
That's it. I'll keep it short. Thank you.
Oh, thanks. We have an announcement. Every other year, we do a New Residents Night. It's a lot of fun. We get the list of houses that have transferred, you know, ownership and we invite the new residents to Village Hall so that they can meet with various, the Board of Trustees and the department heads and kind of talk about what we do here in the village and where to get what and who does what and how do you do this? And basically, it's a really great way of introducing new people to the village and answering a lot of questions and really plucking them to see what committee they want to serve on. This is how Rebecca became a member of the Conservation Advisory Committee and now a sitting trustee. And Andrew, her husband, is on the Zoning Board of Appeals and an architect. And Allison, thanks for recruiting them and putting them right to work. But it's a really fun night and I think, you know, as I see a lot of new young families moving in, there's a lot of new talent and, you know, that's how we keep our committees churning. So New Residents Night is on March 30th. It's a Thursday night, 7 to 9. If any of you are new residents, please attend. If you're not, please come anyway. Heather, I see you sitting there with your mom. I'm so proud of you for listening and enduring this for like over an hour now. So we want to make sure that the young adults in our community are also engaged and maybe you can be our junior member of the board here. So keeping you awake at night. The East Beach project is going really well. The steel wall has been installed. The concrete cap is on top. The tiebacks have been installed. And in the riprock, now the new splash wall is going in front. And Terry Contracting is doing an exceptional job. They'll be starting some of the upland work, restoring some of the material that we lost at the top of the bluff. And then they're poised to revegetate the entire slope for the spring. So it's an exciting project. You know, I believe in the project and I'm looking forward to its completion. At the top of the hill, we have approved the conceptual plan to bring back some pickleball courts and some tennis courts, install more drainage. Again, we were awarded the $3.75 million from Schumer from Congress. We're just waiting for FEMA to open the spigot so we can proceed with the upper bluff project, Phase 2. It is budget season, so we're working with all our departments on putting the budgets together and not trying to spend a lot of money. But I think back over the years of how many projects we've had to complete together as a community since I took office, starting with the EPA Pump and Treatment Facility in the Carolina Ball Field, that's that green building. And that's helping us clean up the contaminants from Lawrence Aviation. I was really excited to be part of that press conference where Schumer came with the last piece of the puzzle and found the $450,000, that last piece to help condemn those buildings. I can't even believe they're still standing up there. It's like a war zone. You feel like you're in the middle of some third world country. But hopefully Congress will transfer the deed now to Suffolk County and they can start working on the project pursuant to the long committed Lawrence Aviation Committee that's been working on. That's been good stuff. What else? We fought to keep LIPA open, like just Steve Engelbert was here, and we prevented that plant from closing once and then we negotiated a tax grievance settlement that's benefiting the residents. I kind of think that the contract to purchase power is gonna get extended because nothing's really happened. The last three years, we've had a pandemic. Energy needs are going up. You see this white smoke coming out of the top of the chimney and more people are driving around with electric cars. So I don't think the demand has decreased. So I think we're gonna see some more impacts from our power plant. Restored East Beach when Sandy and Northeastern, Irene blew her away, restored that seawall. We've built a ton of parking lots. Every single one, Kevin, except for the Gap. We've been waiting for the new owner of the Gap. So we're now gonna be looking at restoring a new parking lot there. I think we've paved more streets than any other community. I think everybody's got a relatively smooth street, right? You leave Port Jefferson, you start driving around the town of Brookhaven, you're in another world. We've done all the lighting in the village, street lighting, building lighting, LED. Everything's dimmed and looking good and we're saving money there. Rocket Ship Park was redone. We have a new emergency command center at the top of the hill. Renovated the MTA parking lot uptown. Pushed that boulder all the way up the hill. We got a few new developments. We got Conifer 1 up and people moving in. And Conifer 2 is soon to be approved by New York State in front of the planning board. What else? We survived a pandemic and we've updated a ton of technology and we're preserving history. So folks, it's time for me to retire. I will not be seeking reelection. So you're in great hands with this board. I couldn't think of a better time. And I just want to say thank you. I'm not going anywhere for a couple of months, so continue to abuse me. But, you know...
Can I say something? We're not clapping because you're retiring. We're clapping.
No, I know. Thank you, Stan. I appreciate that. I just want to say, you know, I don't think I could leave knowing, I promise not to cry. That you guys are in great hands and the community is strong and you got a great staff and great legal counsel and a great team. And I love this place. It hasn't been for the money. That's pretty clear. But, you know, I think it's time to let other people come forward and, you know, there's a lot of really great things going on for me right now. I got a lot of opportunity. I'm excited about my next chapters. And I really want to say that I really believe this is the best time and there's more to be done. And, you know, I'm gonna leave it to you. So with that, I want to open it for a public comment. Allison.
Allison Lapointe, 44 Alt Homestead Road. As a resident, Mayor, thank you. 16 years of your time, your talent, your blood, sweat, and sometimes tears.
14.
14?
That's 14.
Oh, good.
Not doing 16.
I got 12 years older and now I'm 2 years younger. This is great.
Yeah, but thank you.
Time, sweat, blood, sweat, and tears. Sometimes tears. Well, these tears. As your friend, I'm so proud of you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Kathleen Riley, 17, Leaverd Lane. I just think you've been such a blessing to this village for all these years. And it's been many years that I don't think many of the residents know to what extent what you have done for this village. It's just, it's just amazing. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I think there's maybe a handful of people who've been to almost every single meeting. Myrna, you're in that group. Kathleen, Gerard, Allison, Lisa, you guys have been great. Ryan comes on behalf of the school board. Art, you're a latecomer, but you're here. Bob Jay spent so much time in this room. Barbara, thank you for your service to the planning board. Charmaine, you're a gift to this community. Everybody, April, Heather, Keith, the new guys on the block over here. It's just been really a trip. And I couldn't be happier to serve and, you know, we've had such great times and every day is a new day in Village Hall, you know? It's exciting and it's a challenge, but it's really, this is one of the best communities everywhere I go. Port Jefferson, Port Jefferson.
My opinion, and I think I speak for the rest of the board, I think the biggest gift is Margot.
Thank you, Stan.
I have worked with Margot now for almost 20 years, if you count the CCMAC. And I retired as an administrator of 34 years in a public school and I thought I knew a lot, but I have learned an awful lot working with Margot. I think the world of her and wish her all the best, kiddo.
You truly are a gift. You were a gift to me when I met you so many years ago, my little family on Myrtle Avenue. And you've been a friend and your guidance and your instruction and your dedication to this village has gone unmatched and will continue to go unmatched. I appreciate you as our mayor, as the leader of this community for so many years, as my friend. I know I'm gonna start crying. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Met you when you had just a Lena and you were renting on Pinnacle Court. That's a long time ago. I remember when I was first asked, Allison was at my conference room table, and I said, "It's not about me. It's about this community." So this community is yours and it's always been in your hands. So, you know, I couldn't have done my job without you. So just remember that. It's your community and it's in your hands. And God bless you all. It's your time to comment. Let's change the channel. Anybody got anything they want to say? Pat?
Yes, I do.
There you go.
I'm getting over being sick, so please excuse my voice. I live in the Highlands. There are 228 homes in the Highland community and because of you, we have a good life. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Motion to close the public hearing and go out drinking? I'm sorry. Oh, hey, how are you? Yeah, yeah, yeah. So come forward, please.
Whatever I have to want to say, I already said it. The only thing I want to say to you, thank you. And I don't forget the days you walked with me through Port Jeff Station. And we had a good one. And I have a recommendation. I would like to see Kathy to run for the mayor for Jeff.
Well, that's entirely up to her and we can't discuss politics in the room.
And thank you again.
Thank you.
I have other things to discuss, but I think I'm gonna wait until everybody says how good you are and then we'll take it from there.
Thank you so much. He's on Reeves Road.
Thank you.
Are you on Reeves Road? Sheep pasture. What's your address on Sheep? 31. Thank you for the record. Motion to close the public meeting at 7:07. Seconded by trustee Lauks. All in favor? Thanks, guys. See you next week, I mean, next month.